We'll start with introductions.
Sean Moynihan, principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Amanda Gilart, student services director.
Elise Zaza, school board.
Greg LaScola, school board.
Andy Nichols, school board.
Eddie Henderson, school board.
Russell, superintendent. Patrick will be joining us later. He is doing K one, Dr. School Night, and Megan is-
Mrs. Reed is here, but we're doing-
You're doing the same.
We've got some registration tonight.
Yep. Since we handled the roll call, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal rights and liberty, and justice for all.
Agenda. Agenda rolling. Do you need to take the brandy? I can give you mine.
No, go ahead.
I'm gonna say it. I pretty much feel like we just adjourned for the summer, so what happened? Where did it go? We're going to look for the approval of school board meeting minutes. Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the June fifth school board meeting minutes.
Any concerns, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of June fifth, twenty twenty four, non-public.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June fifth, twenty twenty four, non-public.
I'll second it.
Concerns, comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the approval for the minutes of July twenty two, twenty four, CIP meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty second, twenty twenty four, CIP meeting.
I'll second it.
Concerns, comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the agenda review. Agenda is good to go. Good to go. Public forum, accordance with policy B E D H. Seeing nobody here from the public, we will move on from that. School board updates. We'll move right to S M H S.
All right. Not a lot, but we'll be here next week. The good news, a lot of work with the S A U as well, but we're totally filled, right? So all our positions are filled for the year, which might not seem like a huge accomplishment, but if you actually go and talk to other schools or look at, you know, Ed Jobs, New Hampshire, you'll see it's a pretty big accomplishment. So we are all set with that. Students are registering as we speak. They had a chance yesterday. We did some open houses for freshmen, sixth graders and new students. We have a fair amount of new tuition students this year. I'll have the exact numbers on that. Not a lot of kids were out. We have a very small senior class this year, so it's been a small class in general. We've kind of joked a little bit about, you know, in a year where like ten kids come in and three leave, it's always been the same class they leave from. It's been that senior class, and the ten are kind of interspersed a couple of other ways. So I think even in this year's senior class, we didn't get anybody, and we lost two, which might not seem that bad, but when you're at twenty five, now you're at twenty three. So it's our smallest senior class in a long time, but on the whole, our number is still pretty solid.
Nice. The freshman class isn't as big as last year.
Yeah, actually, it's interesting you ask that. So that freshman class, when they were eight, before the eighth grade year, they were the smallest class I remember coming through. I think they were as low as sixteen. We're at thirty three right now. So that's a good sign as well. Like when we look at our sixth grade class, I think our sixth grade class is like thirty seven, thirty eight. In history, we tell us that we're going to jump a little bit in the ninth grade anyway, so we have some good numbers there. The sophomore class is our largest class. It's in the forties, but that was, as we remember from last year, that was a class that had a lot of tuition students in that. Not as many, it looks like, in the middle school. We've got, you know, not that we get all of them there, but, you know, the tuition numbers kind of ebb and flow depending on how large those schools are. But large sophomore class in that freshman class, which was tiny, is now up over the thirty number, which makes us feel pretty good. That's good.
Yeah.
What is, how do we get our student representative? Again, that gets in the next month or so. We actually turned in a great job in getting that taken care of last year. We sorted through student council. They have, we have a candidate. They weren't able to make it this meeting, but they should be with September. Is that right, Sean?
Correct. Yep. So we'll put that in place, and there'll be, we've got a system set up where it will come from our student council, and then we, when they're in the student council, you get elected to. Then in there, they will run from that student council. It'll be a school-wide. If we have enough, this year, we only had one person from the student council who was interested in doing it, but, so she'll start the September meeting.
Who's gonna be the rep?
Taylor Goodsteve.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Now, is she a tuition student?
She is.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good.
Different perspective.
Yeah, I like that.
Moving on to superintendent update. Thank you. We'll get into the summer projects, but I just want to take a second to thank Matt and his crew. They've done a great job this year with a lot of things that were going on, but trying to get the buildings to pack up to shape. It is just sort of like home maintenance, right? It's just a never-ending, 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 never-ending. But we have the biomass parts going well, the foyer, the riot glasses, riot glasses on the way. But some floors were done, the windows in the elementary school, new stack of floors in the cafeteria look really, really good. Touch-up painting, making sure the plumbing, really, we did a lot of work on plumbing, getting a lot of the plumbing up and running. Folks should remember Doug. Remember Doug? I don't care if those of you remember him, but Doug would fix anything with anything and everything.
Buffer pads.
Buffer pads, right? Well, you can only imagine what he did with plumbing. We'll just leave it at that. So we're getting a lot of things up to speed. We, this school here has passed all its lead inspection, so we have cleared lead completely here. We only have one at the elementary school that we are retesting now. It actually has been sent away, waiting for the result of that. We've had our fire alarms, our fire inspections and all that stuff, and we are ready to go. So we're in good shape there. Legislative update, just real quick, and I know we haven't really started yet, but so last year between government, between education and government, we tracked twelve hundred bills were filed. Four hundred and fifty of those were tracked really closely out of those four fifty, forty-seven paths. Some of those, you know, are mundane, and they don't really affect us day to day. There are a few that will and have. We'll talk about a few during the budget process, or there's some things that we'll need to put documentation and get some things up on our website and provide things in public places. But also things like putting food nutrition hotline numbers on our student IDs. There are things regarding curriculum materials and parent notifications, ensuring that we're teaching proper voting in our civics classes with our kids. Holocaust added a facet being taken off the plate as a mandatory. So not horrible things, but there's some things that definitely make you scratch your head. One of them is listing the top four administrative salaries that need to be now posted on your website. It's an interesting twist along with things like cost per pupil to student and principal salary and federal grants that we received. And so there's this interesting twist on what they're looking for and what they're getting at. So we'll see how that plays out. But all in all, forty-seven out of twelve hundred, not too bad. Title IX, we're gonna hear a little bit about from, for Title IX, but we, Kelly and I have had eight hours of Title IX, I think, under our belt at this point. All the administrators and directors will be taking a three-hour Title IX with our attorney on Friday. The Title IX policies and rules and procedures have changed. They were, needed to be in place by August first. That's why today, when you're doing this, you'll see the first and final reading. Those policies need to be in place for the side of school. They really have to do with discrimination, our procedures and our policies regarding discrimination. Stopping as Sean said, as Sean said, we're in a really great place. We're able to hire two adjustment counselors. We were able to get Hannah Grant, who is our S E L specialist. We were able to get her certified by the Department of Education in her continued education as an adjustment counselor, and then we hired Cassandra Holt. And Cassandra was working in the, as a licensed mental health practitioner and a counselor and a social worker in the prison system in New Hampshire, and we've been able to bring her over. And she's, both Hannah and Cassandra have done a great resource over the summer and have already connected with families and has done some really, really good work. So we're excited to have both of them on board. Amanda has got all her power educators signed, and she has worked diligently. I honestly think she just waited on the corner when people went by. She just grabbed them, brought them in the S A U and said, "Would you like to be a parrot?"
Slightly. I mean, if they had kids in the district, I was like, "Hey, you're staying home? You want a job?"
Right.
Or fuck.
She was kidnapping people, I think, so, I don't know. We'll see. As Sean said, teachers, food service, we are fully staffed right now. We were fully staffed custodian, and three weeks ago, the custodian that we had that was working full-time decided that for personal reasons, he needed to step away. And so Matt has been diligently over the last two weeks, having interviews, and he had, I think, two yesterday, and he's got two or three other candidates that he's looking at. So we are getting candidates, so that's a great thing. And then finally, I just want to recognize that folks have worked on our summer school program. Our summer school program, we've talked about it here a couple of times. We've done some presentations around the state regarding it. The rec, the library and ourselves have just done, I think, a really, really interesting, unique job of changing summer school into something that is much more viable and vibrant for the kids that are involved. Only our kids that need that extended learning, but also every kid that's participating in the summer rec. And so you're participating in summer rec and you're learning math skills. You're doing literacy. You're going swimming. You're going on all these great trips. And then Robin, Robin ran the course up here, but Rachel has done that for the last two years down at the Sherburne Gym. We have a lot of folks that work here as power educators that work in that program. And so just another successful year, and thank you again for Amanda and Steve for putting all that together with the town. So we'll stop there, and we'll just keep moving, I guess, in policy. All right. Anybody have any school board topics? Is there a, the biomass, is that looking to be on target with times? Yeah, so we can talk about that now. I mean, Andy, can we get that to Steve, or we can wait to- We can wait to then. Either or. My apologies. Nope. Comments?
Maybe just a quick question. Booster Club, how is that looking for this year? Do you know? Do you have a line of sight on that? I know that there was, like, that they're trying to bolster additional support for that because it's been tough and falling pretty heavily on the shoulders of others. And I don't even know, like, if that's something you get too involved in, but-
I haven't been. So my understanding, I was approached, actually Sean and I were approached this morning, and there is a senior that's taking on the booster shed as a senior project, so we're excited about that. I know we put some of that plumbing into the booster closet at the gym, at the Sherburne Gym, and I know that, you know, the senior project that was done last year, people have commented a lot about that as well. I haven't heard too much other, too much other reports from the booster club. We are gonna reconvene and talk a little more about playgrounds and have a deeper look at that, try to get a much more realistic look at what that's gonna be. As folks know, last year, we were, we talked to a couple vendors, and we were in, you know, millions of dollars, or one point two, whatever it was. I took a look at some things this year. They helped us think over some things, and certainly, I think we can do it a lot cheaper than one point two million dollars. So if you want to take a how to look at that, it would be great to get the goal and then be able to push the goal.
Yeah. Yeah, and I was just like, I think, did we talk about this, the booster club last year? I feel like we came up at a meeting.
We should be able to continue to promote all the great work.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if there's like, maybe, if any conversations have progressed with that, with now, you know, school gearing up, because it feels like a lot of the parents and families don't really know the impact that the booster club has on the schools until, like, they're senior and they sit in a graduation and hear that, "Ooh, they give out scholarships," or "They do other things." So it'd be really nice to be able to promote that. A, to get more engagement and involvement from families to support it, but then, you know, to help with bolstering that support for the, you know, the support that we're looking for.
I think what we could do is maybe schedule them to come in in October. I mean, September is just a little quick. It was a couple of weeks away, but maybe if we want to have them come here, that'll give them an opportunity to kind of look at, at least have a meeting to take a look at what their goals are and be able to sort of have that communication here as a public meeting.
I mean, I don't want to put extra burden on them either, but just how we, you know, how do we get the word out there? How do you?
Right. How do we help them?
How do you get engagement from the families and make sure that everybody knows what they're doing?
One thing we could, I'm sorry. I think one thing we could do is, most of the booster club involvement right now, right there, it's coming to an end, right? I think that's part of it.
Yeah.
So possibly just even at open house, having the booster club kind of have the table at open house.
Yes.
And, you know, because that will be in early September, and we'll have parents coming through anyway, so that might be an opportunity. But again, it leads to more from the, you know, it's more work again for-
I know. Well, I even wondered, like, if there was a way that for all of the families, like, kids that play sports, if the families could be encouraged to sign up and, like, you know, work the booster club. Again, I don't know what kind of work that is, but just to get more people engaged, because it's something you definitely want to see keep going.
Yep.
And that's my concern, too, is that it's fallen on the shoulders of so few that it's gonna just be gone at some point.
We'll back up a little to school updates, S C E S. I just got, Chris Carey, you actually hit on something that's great, and I didn't, it's been, I wanted to talk about it. So it goes back to sort of my evaluation of last year. And one of the things we talked about was succession planning, but also really looking at how we continue to do the things that we have done well as we continue to change personnel and continue to move forward. And so yesterday at opening, we talked really about the old and the new, and the new and the old, and really challenging people to look at, you know, okay, so Cub has left. I don't see a lot of people stepping up to take kids to the White Mountains in the middle of the wintertime anymore, right? But that's okay, but what else do we potentially have of people have that want to get involved in? And so we sort of challenged people yesterday to, we don't always have to fill the pieces of the puzzle that were there. We can make new puzzles.
Yep.
And so it'll be interesting to see sort of how we continue to carry the torch, if you will, holding on to some of those things that we value, and how we add new things to it without always, you know, rewind and play.
Yeah.
And I think that has really a lot to do with the booster club, because you think of the people in the booster club, they've been there for a long time, and they're like, "I'm pretty exhausted," and somebody else needs to, you're looking around and nobody's there, so it's kind of this.
Yep.
Sorry for being late. I was at the pre-K and K back-to-school night. This year, we decided to do something different, and I'm really excited about how well it went. We separated pre-K and K from grades one through five. We got some feedback last year from some parents. It was an overwhelming event for kids who are unfamiliar with our school environment, and then they were very trappin' to come to school on the first day of school. So we took that feedback, and it went really well tonight. It's a jappy, you agree? But overall, very happy. I think we probably saw seventy-five percent of kids. But very, very happy with that. Tomorrow night, we have the grades one through five, five to seven up at the school. We have been busy preparing the school all summer, and it looks, it looks phenomenal. In my three years here, we had the construction project that we had to recover from, I felt like. I mean, it felt like limp along catching up to the dust that settled after all that. And then we got our first summer where we were still kind of getting out of that, doing a bunch of things to make sure the school was continuously improving and improving that hundred-year-old building. This is the first year, I'd say, we were able to just clean, really paint, and now it looks great. I think a couple things. One, thank you very much for your support with that. I know that you and historical boards have pushed for projects for that building, and now we've settled where we're at, and we continually are going to keep going. Your support has been noticed. Time and time again, I've had parents coming in for tuition walks. I've had parents come in who had just relocated to town, and the number one they say, thing they say is, "Wow, this is a hundred years old." So that really tells us a lot. Opening days in-service have been going great. There's a good buzz in the school. We have a lot of things that we're gonna tackle this year in terms of initiatives, school-wide behavioral expectations. We have come up with an acronym, acronym of S O R, stay safe, own your actions, always responsible, and respect everyone. What really comes with that is teaching people, teaching our little ones to be a part of a community. We have rules and responsibilities as adults. I'm not gonna go down in front of eleven and speed it past high school. I know that. It's kind of like those bumpers to help teach the kids those expectations so that when they are in middle and high school, and they have a little more free time, they make the right choices because they remember those expectations that were placed on them, and then keep going forward, being responsible citizens. Tracked really closely a law, H B ten fifteen. This is a law around literacy and math instruction. And so we're really having some conversations at the school this school year around what does this law mean? What, how does it impact what we're doing? What do we need to look at? What might, what old may be new, and what new might be old, and how do we have to improve? That law has a start date of July one, twenty twenty seven. So we have two years to figure out if we need professional development or programming, what we need. So I imagine during our budget cycle, we'll begin, starting to come forward to the board and sharing some of that, hopefully, if we get done hooking up. The state has offered supports for looking at that and auditing your curriculum. Jeff White and I are gonna meet with the literacy specialists in the state and see if that's a service we can, for free, use. But overall, I'm very excited for the school year. It seems to be a very positive buzz. Everything I'm hearing is great, all the excitement, everything I'm seeing, just set up to be a very good year.
I was in the school a few days ago, and it does look really nice. The windows look really good. The entryway, the floor in the cafeteria, you know, it's looking really good. It's been, it's the best I've seen it, you know, in years, so.
At first, I was nervous with the windows, because they came and put them in, and there were gaps, because they, of course, didn't. So they didn't put, for some reason, all the stuff around the edge, and I was walking around going. So I called Matt that afternoon. I was like, "I'm a little worried here. What are they doing?" And he had to check because he hadn't been in yet, so he tried to check, and he said, "Maybe they just didn't put in all the, all the stuff." Now it looks better.
Yeah.
It actually looks like it's sealed and ready for winter.
Right.
So it, overall, just really happy with where we're at.
Policy updates. Going to look for a motion to approve the first reading and final approval of the A C nondiscrimination, Equal Opportunity Employment and Affirmative Action, A C A A harassment of students, A C A A R one student discrimination and harassment complaint procedures, and A C A A R two student sex discrimination and harassment complaint procedures. A C A B harassment of employees, and A C A B R one employee discrimination and harassment complaint procedures, and A C B A R two employee sexual discrimination harassment complaint procedures, and J one E pregnant students. I think we can say a motion to approve as read. Correct?
I'll make a motion to approve as read.
I second.
Any concerns?
Do you want me to talk about it a little bit?
If you'd like to, or how would you like to do that?
I mean, their basic employee and student sex discrimination harassment procedure, it's pretty actually extensive procedure, which I thought was impressive. And then your basic nondiscrimination basis, on the basis of sex and other protected categories. And just the procedure and definition of harassment and sexual harassment under the New Hampshire law. And then the pregnancy, student pregnancy policy is just going into the rights to education, modify education and accommodations, and any leave and lactation needs for those students. So it's pretty straightforward.
So it looked like mostly it was a lot of procedure changes, correct? Driven by state law?
Federal.
Federal law?
So federal Title IX.
Okay.
And that's all, so this is all federal Title IX changes that have been kind of in the back burner or somewhere since last year, and they finally got approved over the summertime, and were implemented and put into place in August of this year. And they needed to be in place, and that's why we're doing a close and final reading. Your policy, B G A A, allows you to take on unexpected urgency. The board may waive second meeting limitations to make immediate action, adopt new policies, and revise it. So these are federally mandated policies that we must have.
Yep.
And yes, Andy, it really comes down to just changing.
I scanned them, but it looked like a lot of procedure.
So in the, so all those I's, R one, R two, R one, R two are all procedures and protocols in which we would follow. We have such a reporter complaint.
Yeah.
And these are all legal in school board. Any other concerns, comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No questions. And looking for a motion to approve the first reading of policy E C E, excuse me, procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of handicap and disability, A C F food nutrition services, anti-discrimination and civil rights complaints, I C school year and school year calendar, and I H B A programs for pupils and disabilities, and I K F A early graduation. Looking for a motion to approve as read.
Make a motion to approve as read.
I second.
About we go?
Updates.
So some of these are just condensed policies. The school year and school year calendar were two separate ones that were condensed into one and just more lighter language around it. Early graduation had very specific steps that became, you know, a little more vague for students to apply for early graduation. The A C F food and nutrition is a new policy, if I'm correct, Russell, and it just talks about the USDA nondiscrimination statement and how to make a complaint to the USDA. And then the procedure safeguards and nondiscrimination on the basis of handicap and disability. Amanda, do a modification update and make sure the language is in compliance with those, so.
Any concerns, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 This has to be a motion, correct? Yes. Okay. Looking for a motion to review and withdraw policies. Please see attached list, reviewed policies and withdrawn policies. So as folks know, we started the, within the policy committee, we started the review process, looking at policies that were ten years old or older. None of them are over than ten years. And in that process, you see that we think that we have this review, which means we made minor tweaks or no tweaks at all, or are we withdrawn because, again, things have been combined and we're now off the table. Amanda and Elise have done a great job. We are all the way up to J's, so we'll go back. We have the D financial, but we got J's to do, which means we're more than three quarters of the way through. J is a pretty extensive piece of the policy, so, but they've done a great job so far. Really appreciate the work. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyway, we did post all those on the agenda, on the, behind the agenda online, so if you wanted to look through them, people would have that opportunity as well. Action items. Looking for a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to fifty-five thousand dollars from the Sunapee Central Education Space Capital Reserve for the installation of windows at S C E S second floor.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed spending, if needed, up to fifty-five thousand dollars from the Sunapee Central Education Space Capital Reserve for the installation of the windows on the second floor of S C E S.
I'll approve. I second.
So we apologize. We swear that we did this. We swear we did this last year, and we looked everywhere for, in the minutes, and we didn't do it. We talked about it. I know we talked about it. I know we talked about it here, but we never made this motion to get the money. So as we've heard, the windows are in. They look great, and so I think we should get the money out, which, while we did it. But that's why we put this account in place, and this will force someone to use those windows until we like to take that. There is currently seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars in that account. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And a motion to approve the proposed extracurricular positions for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed extracurricular positions for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
I'll second it.
So the list there, we are fully staffed except bass fishing. No Rob?
No Rob. Not doing it this year. Don't do it. So hiring the bass fishing coach is a little bit trickier, because they-
You need a bass boat.
They need a bass fishing boat. So that, like, we don't, we don't make the golf coach provide the golf course. We don't make the bass fishing coach provide the lake, but we do need the bass fishing boat. So that, that one could be a little trickier. We're, Tom's kind of on it.
Tough one to fill.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concern? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no opposed. Information items, new hires, S M H S math teacher.
So we were able to get a math teacher, although it was a little late. Shawn and his team did a really great job, had some great candidates, and we ended up with Tarek Griffin. Tarek was working over in Maine, was over in Bedford, D'Amres before that, was up in Maine for a few years. We brought her back, she's been started here. When you see Tarek, she may look familiar to you.
What's familiar?
She looks very familiar because her last name at one point in time was...
Let you say it, Mr. Holden.
Cludier. Cludier?
Yes.
Sister J, math teacher, Melissa.
Okay, I was gonna say, I recognized Cludier and I couldn't place it, so.
So one of the other sisters was also a B T B A here last year, Kim Cludier, so that might be the rec, we've had all three sisters at some point.
Okay, yeah, Cludier clan.
Put them together and they, you can go, oh yeah, you two are definitely right. So we're happy to have her, she's done a great job, she's already relocated down this way, and we're really looking forward to continue working with her, so. Despite policy, you gave me permission to hire her, and that is a lump sum.
Okay. S M H S extended trip, close-up.
Shawn, or...
Yeah, you know, this is a trip that we do every, every other year, Mrs. Reed and Mr. Frederick go on that. I, I've actually done it a couple times, but that was back when Mrs. Reed was a teacher. We don't like to have two administrators out, so same thing with Gettysburg, one of us will stay by when we do that. But they go the week, it's a, it's, they miss four days of school as opposed to five because we missed the Veterans Day there. But it's a great program, we have a lot of students interested in it, they get to Washington, D.C., they do a lot of work there, and a very, very good trip, it's, it's nice that we're able to do that. It's interesting, again, Mr., you know, Holden speaks of the things that we do and, you know, we, we hope to be able to do these things forever and, and, you know, some of the things maybe we will be able to, but that's another one that, you're asking a lot of staff to take a week off from their families and it's a lot of work. So for right now, every other year, we're still gonna close up.
So is there the fundraising plan, is that in?
They do, that one has a fundraiser, they do the, the rubber ducks, the duck race, which is this weekend, so they make, they make a fair amount of money on that. Close-up is expensive, so when you look at that trip, it's, it's an expensive trip and it's, it's like, well, I could go to Washington for less than that, but a lot of it is the close-up activities that really take part of that. So Mrs. Reed works very diligently to try to make it opportunities for students to raise money so they can get their opinion.
So what does it typically cost a student to go out of their pocket without, like, with the funding?
A lot of it really depends on how much they're able to make on the, on the rubber duck race, but it's, that trip, a lot of times it's seventeen hundred dollars in that range for the student.
For the student.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next school board meeting is September fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Project update.
Yeah, I want to do this one first. And summer project updates.
We, we have talked about a lot of them, I think I liked having Andy have a little bit about the biggest one we are going on and...
Yeah, and I don't think either one of us have the latest updates.
No.
You know, on the biomass, but we did get together in July, right, and talked about controls and that the need for new controls in the school, which isn't included in the, in the biomass, the biomass boiler will get us up and running, it'll be enough controls to, to use it for the school, but it won't give us the same level of control or math to be able to remote in and find problems, things like that, which we will have to eventually invest in that. Not super cheap, but it is something that we can gear up and do year after year, we don't have to do it in one shot. So, you know, we can throw, you know, some money at it every year, you know, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars, it'll probably go a long ways every year for a few years, so if we decide to, you know, spread that out and, you know, amortize it a bit, we'll be okay. You know, we did talk about the new glass, the riot glass, it worked out really well at the elementary school, I think that looked good. And a little bit more about the camera system, which I, I don't know the ins and outs of really, but I'm sure everybody'd like to hear about that, 'cause that sounded pretty, pretty interesting. And that's not all I got, Carrie.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the biomass, it's, unlike the last biomass, this one's like, gone up quick, staying on track.
Silo here, delivered.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, looks great, signing went on, was going on yesterday and today, already pavement redone, tubes put in, electrical put in, hot water turned over today, the propane boiler is sitting in place and is currently being hooked up. The boiler itself has been shipped, we've been told, supposedly sometime in September, and they are all excited to get that and get that installed. The old boiler, the old boilers were taken out, there was some asbestos that was holding those things together, certainly they were built in, when they were built. So in that real hot week in the first week of August, they had abated all the asbestos, took the tanks down, and they went down with slide cameras and they smashed them up into pieces. They put a tote, tote, rubber tote, on the end of a rope, and man, two men stood at the top, two men stood at the bottom, and they loaded pieces, they pulled the rope up, dumped it in a dumpster, and it kept going back and forth and back, it took over a week to clear out the pieces of the old, old burners. But they are gone, they are off site, I don't know what kind of truck came in and picked those up and moved that dumpster out of here, but I was told it was like bulging, like a suitcase, it had, had too much in it. So, so we're, we're moving in a great direction, right on schedule, feeling good, we, as Carrie just said, things are here, things are on time, things are ready for the, when the things come, the next step, connection and go. And as I said, hot water is in place and we are now running off of the newly installed hot water, temporary, but all that piping and thing is working and the propane boiler being installed. Andy talked about the riot glass and the new entrance, based upon the safeguard that we have, that installation of that glass is actually coming, we checked, it was a little bit delayed, 'cause we had the opportunity with the finances that we had to put ballistic glass in the doors and the front entrance itself, the storefront, and so we've done that, the riot glass goes on the other windows, we're putting a new buzzer system, go down, as you go downstairs, you know, if we buzz in, it's no longer a key, actually we need a key fob to do that, we're putting a new camera system in the front, which is actually, instead of looking down on you, it'll look straight out at you, and then that will be projected onto an iPad that the administrative system will have at our desk, and she'll actually be able to contact and look at you and see you sort of eye to eye, have that communication, you'll come into our foyer, then you'll go up to the top of the stairs, and we put a new speaker system into like the bank teller window, so that communication is a little better there. So we feel like we've really tightened up that space down there, we had done some work before, it still felt a little loose, I think with this, these additions, you know, nothing I think is ever a hundred percent, but this certainly gets us closer to feeling a little bit better about when people get into our building. We talked about the, the overall windows themselves in the elementary school, the second floor, they look, they look really good, they have a little bit of attention, people appreciate that, they're on schedule there, next year to do the third floor, we're gonna go back and look at how we, how we, what we do with the windows in the library, those are really giant windows, and so we really need to look at heat loss and do we need windows that big anymore there? Again, at one point in time, that was a gymnasium, do we don't necessarily need all that light in there, but still want enough light because of the size of that room. Lot of work was done, done at the Sherburne Gym, as I said, regarding the plumbing, electrical work, just Matt and his crew have done a really, really nice job, and I agree with you, Randy, I think that elementary school looks probably the best I've seen in twelve years. So kudos, kudos to everyone for doing the work.
Nice and bright, clean.
Yeah, clean, like, it's got a good smell of, like, the air's fresh and just the whole thing is, is in a, in a good place, so.
I agree with you. All right, moving on, looking for a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Agenda items for the next meeting.
So we'll certainly review the opening of having kids in our building after our summer vacation, we'll give you some preliminary numbers of what enrollment looks like, and I think what we'd like to do at that point in time is also talk about, have a discussion for you to be thinking about, what might be some of the things you're interested in seeing with, from our students and our teachers this year. So we, we got away from it a little bit, we did a little bit last year, but, you know, are there groups, we've talked about the Booster Club, are there other groups or other programs or things that you would like to hear, whether it's athletics, we've had guidance in, maybe transportation this year, so be thinking about what some of those things are, because we'd like to get those lined up throughout the year for you. We have started our budget process already, just, just given that things moved pretty quickly, we're gonna start our budget process, we have our audits coming in next week, so we're like, you know what, let's get things done, let's get things organized, let's get things into the system. Because of negotiations this year, we felt like we don't wanna leave ourselves, we don't wanna leave ourselves stuck in case we run into things that we need to fix along the way, specifically negotiations and more articles.
We don't have any requests for going in ninety-one A, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Thank you, everybody, welcome back, new school year.